...meeting of the Suffolk County Planning Commission. I would note that we have a quorum present. I would ask Commissioner Finn to lead us into the question.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on our agenda is the meeting summary for March 2014. I know Ted circulated that yesterday. Anyone have any comments on that or corrections? I thought it looked pretty good. Actually, we had no administrative items, so it was pretty straightforward. I had one little typo that I'll give you, but anyone else have anything else they wanted to add or change? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the staffed forward motion by Commissioner Casey and seconded by Commissioner Whelan. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. That's you, Adams. How many do we have today? Five? I got you. You're good.
Just tried to vote a couple.
Well, hey, it's the Babylon. Hey. All right. It's 10-0. We have a...
I didn't vote.
All right. One abstention. So it's 9-0, one abstention. Do we have any public cards today? We have a pretty...
No questions.
All right. Good. Not good. It's just a fact. All right. I'll move out to the chair report, and first of all, in a few minutes, we're going to hear from our new county legislator, Presiding Officer Dwayne Gregory. Thank you, Presiding Officer, for being here. Appreciate that. We'll get you on in just a moment. Wanted to just touch base on a couple items we're working on, particularly sewer infrastructure funding. We really want to congratulate Sarah and the Planning Department team for their work on the IBM Smart Cities Award. I don't know if you saw that. And Sarah's going to be here in a few minutes. We'll all have to congratulate her. But a really nice win allows expertise from... allows expertise from the private sector to come in Suffolk County with a focus on wastewater and how we deal with those issues. As you know, the county executive has continued to... use the Presiding Officer of my case better.
It's one of the perks.
It's one of the perks.
The bee perk.
County Executive has continued to emphasize water quality as its top priority. First step was seeking use of federal Sandy funds to provide needed sewer expansion in vulnerable areas along the South Shore, particularly in Babylon, Islip, and Brookhaven, along with improvements to the Bergen County Plant. And that was announced... effort's been ongoing and was announced just this past week. And then, of course, another key piece of the next step is financing for decentralized systems and new sewer systems. And the Planning Commission, and you all know, have been one of the leaders on that issue in the county. I've met with the legislature and the county executive in recent weeks, hoping to resume the focus on that critical issue here in the coming weeks. We look forward to working, of course, with the Presiding Officer on that, as well as Legislature Prebsky, who's the new head of the Blue Ribbon Task Force for the legislature, and of course, Legislature Han, who heads the EPA Committee. On agriculture, I was asked to meet with a number of the farm organization leaders last month. I brought up the speed on some of the efforts we have on the Planning Commission with regard to agriculture. They were very impressed and thankful for the work going on. Yeah, I forgot to mention that Adrian was part of the commission when I was there personally.
Adrian.
Exactly. In fact, honestly, our emphasis on new farmers and creating pathways and tools for new farmers really did resonate. And in fact, two weeks ago, following the breakfast I had with the farm leaders, the county executive announced he was going to set up an agriculture education task force headed by Augie Brooke DeChell, who you've all met and we've worked with now out of the Department of Economic Development Planning. Also, this coming Monday, the Planning Commission is hosting with a breakfast discussion at East Hampton Town Hall on new farmers and the obstacles they're facing. And we're going to be co-hosting that event along with Congressman Ted Bishop and East Hampton Supervisor Larry Cantwell. Want to give thanks in particular to Commissioner John Whelan for his efforts in organizing that event. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. I don't know if you want to say anything else about the event. If anyone would like to drive to East Hampton at 8:00 a.m. for breakfast, they're more than welcome to join us. I know at least Barbara and Carl will be there. But John, anything else you want to mention about the event for having our money?
No, just is this working? Let's see if it works.
Yeah, hold on.
Does it work? There we go. Sorry. Thanks, David. Yeah, just real briefly, we have great positive response from many of the people. Many of the people there will be representatives through Economic Land Trust, from the county, from our commission, from... and about seven or eight local farmers and members from Southampton Town and as well from the Planning Department and the Matt Land Acquisition and Management Department. So we have quite a large agenda to discuss, we're having a roundtable. And one of the things that's kind of key that Dave and I were meeting with the planners and supervisor about in the East End would be working towards making sure that future agricultural reserves are actually used for agriculture and hopefully in places like East Hampton and Southampton that could be legislating into new site planning here. And the other thing is would be when the development services are already bought up, that possibly be smaller farmers that lease reserve land. So we try to make an issue to move that along. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any questions? Again, Carl's also been helping lead our agricultural efforts, but since this was an East Hampton idea and project, I appreciate John's involvement in helping put this together. Like you said, we have about 20 people, including about a bunch of farmers. In fact, I just heard of another Southampton farmer, a new farmer, who wants to participate today, so I will give you their name. And all this, of course, consistent with our goal of getting some projects going in conjunction with the administration that are consistent with the agriculture plan that we're hoping will be finalized and come out here sometime over the summer.
Pardon me, Chairman Cologne.
Yes.
Would you just share the location so that we'd like to attend? I do recall seeing an email previously, but also if there's a fee, since it says a breakfast.
No. Breakfast is free, which should get at least, you know, a bunch of us out these guys ready.
I'm going to get my telly back.
It's at East Hampton Town Hall. It's at East Hampton Town Hall. And Mr... And to the extent that you know folks from South Hall, Nick, who might be interested in participating, or if there's any new farmers, again, I know Carl sort of was thinking about any one or two people you might reach out to. We need to just figure out who's coming so that we can, you know, get enough bagels or whatever. That's what I was trying to say, but among my circles also, because I do think there are people that would like to attend. There wasn't an email. I saw it about a week ago. It felt like so many electronic things that sometimes get buried. Thank you.
So I will get Nick's email. I will email him what I sent out last night, David, perhaps?
Yeah, that's a good idea. John sent out an email last night to a bunch of the attendees with a little more definition around it, so we're open to cover it and that kind of stuff. So that would be good. We should, John, make sure that your name or the county or the town supervisor's name is on that email turntable so people can already see, so we know who's coming. That's the big thing.
Right. David, did Steve Weir respond? Did he get back to you?
I don't think Steve got back to us.
Because I gave them a call and, you know, they said they were going to send somebody.
Okay. You wouldn't mind following up with Steve?
I'll follow up on that, yeah. That would be great.
That's a farm... Steve Weir, for those that don't know, is head of Farm Credit East, and they do a lot of great stuff on early farmers, financing for them, et cetera. All right. On professional certifications, just want to give an update on that. I spoke with Des Ryan from ABLI yesterday. Now that the budget is passed in Albany, Albany's now going to be focusing on the other issues, including professional certification. I know Senator Lee Zeldin, had some conversations with him about this, and he's expressed some interest, and so I'm hoping we're going to meet with him about that in the coming month or so, to see where that goes. On our economic development conference, remember, we were working on this with the Suffolk IDA, putting this together for the county. Our IDA Executive Director Anthony Manetta, as you may have read, just stepped down. He's been here once or twice before the commission, but I spoke with him, and he's still eager to get this done since he's going to remain involved with the agency part-time for the next, at least a couple of months, it sounds like. So we're hoping to still hold that county economic development effort or conference before the summer gets going. On the geothermal code, we got finally revised, proposed code from the industry a few days ago. We now need to circulate it among our key stakeholders like the Water Authority, Millble Energy, Long Island, our own energy and environment working group, and like to hopefully get the feedback back and back to this commission by our meeting in May, but we'll see about the timing of that. John Whelan and Mike Cofflin have been helping spearhead that. What's that? Lastly, on the comprehensive plan, one of the primary responsibilities of the County Planning Commission, of course, under the county charter, is to propose a comprehensive plan for the county. AKRF, as you know, has been heading up the effort to develop that plan. A few weeks ago, the folks involved around this table were on the oversight committee, reviewed the work of AKRF, made a number of suggestions. Particularly, I want to thank Kalenis Berry and Mike Cofflin for their involvement and input there. I think there's a bit of work to do, certainly, and to what Davies from the Planning Department has been putting a lot of time and effort into this as well. Our general game plan that we discussed at our last commission meeting was that following AKRF's work, which technically ended a few days ago, but we're hoping to get an extension so they can do some of the work that needs left to be done, following their work, the commission and staff will incorporate the farm plan and the water quality plan when those are finalized over the next couple of months. It's like a big band over here.
The church bells off the swat.
Really.
It's a sacred project.
It's a sacred project.
And then we'll layer over an overview chapter and knit those findings together. And then what has to happen is we have to have, under the county charter, we have to have at least two public hearings on the draft plan. Needs to be recommended by this commission to the county legislature, and the county legislature will, you know, consider that. So a bunch of steps left to go. The hard work is being done now. Appreciate everyone who's involved with that. Last note for all of you. Next meeting is at the Bergen Point Sewer Treatment Plant at 2:00 p.m. on May 7. Babylon Town Supervisor Rich Schaefer is going to be joining us for the meeting. I don't know if he'll join us for the sewer tour, but Supervisor Schaefer's going to be talking about a lot of the projects that we own in Babylon right now, so he'll be joining us for the meeting. And at 1:30, just prior to the meeting, we'll be doing the tour of the plant. And Andy, we need to figure out exactly where people need to be or whatever.
We'll be sending out specifics on all of that. Only thing, I just want to remind you, in case you don't have one handy, is a pair of sneakers. You need sneakers for the tour. So make sure you bring your plan, and I'm doing the tour, make sure you bring a pair of sneakers, or wear sneakers.
Mike will bring boots for everyone. Is it instruction boots works, right?
I would imagine that works. They said sneakers, but we could clarify that.
It's not heels.
Right.
Mike should leave his heels in.
Anyway, so that'll be fun. And you know what's interesting? We talk all the time about sewers. It'd be good for some of us who've never been to one of these places to actually check it out and see how they work.
Oh, yes.
Adrian, Adrian, the tour.
I can tell you from experience, you have not lived, you have toured some of these big facilities.
Well, so then we'll all have... our lives will be worthwhile as it may sound, so. All right. Any questions? Thanks to all of you who helped push a bunch of this stuff forward. Any other things to raise or suggestions? If not, I wanted to... Sarah will be with us in a few minutes, but I wanted to thank Dwayne Gregory for coming and congratulate him on his new election as Presiding Officer, and wanted to give him the floor to say hello and maybe talk about some of the things that he and the legislature are looking to focus on this coming year. So thank you and congratulations.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Cologne, and good afternoon to the rest of the commission. Some of you I do know, some I don't know, but I want to thank you all for your service and commitment to Suffolk County. It's very much appreciated. As you may be aware of, I am the new Presiding Officer. It's been almost... it's been three months. It's been a quick three months. You know, I've been a legislator since 2008, over five years. It'll be actually six years in August. And, you know, during my tenure, we've had some financial difficulties, as you're all aware of, and we're slowly making our way through it. But, you know, it's a difficult time to be in government, to say the least. But it's still important that you guys do and some of the other commissions and departments do the things that they do. Government still has to function. Important priority for me, and I'm a, you know, we hear a lot about, you know, our brain drain. I am an example of that. I live that. I'm a twin brother. Not many people know that. I have an identical twin brother.
It's up for meetings, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. We both went off to college, you know, North Carolina. I came back and he never did. You know, he's lived in Atlanta, he's lived in Louisiana, he stayed in North Carolina. Now he's in Utah, all places, but he's never came back to New York. Once he got married, started to raise a family, it was just too expensive. And you hear that story over and over and over again. Even a native mine, one of my closest aides, she is a sophomore in college in Pennsylvania. She's already talking about when she graduates not coming back to Long Island. You hear that story over and over again. So we have to find a way to create housing for our young people to... so that they can stay here. And I don't mean in our basements, in the parents' basements. I mean livable spaces that will allow them to live the lifestyles that they want to live. You know, as a... I grew up in Long Island. I grew up in the Sub-Christip area, and, you know, there was some urge. I don't know what it is. I can't really explain it today, but I had an urge to go to the city. I want to be around, you know, New York City. Never really liked it. I had some family, I would go in, go in, come out, but as a young person, I found it exciting. And a lot of our young people are finding that lifestyle exciting. We have to make Suffolk County exciting for our young people. Give them, you know, downtowns, what Mayor Pontiari is doing in the Village of Paxton is tremendous. A lot of excitement, you have theaters, you have restaurants, bars, a lot of things for people to do. You can walk, you don't need transportation. What County Executive Blone is doing in my district, with Water Idiot Rising, and some of the other projects, you know them all, the Rocktop of a Hug, and others, those are things that are going to change the dynamic, but we have to continue to move forward with that line of thought. And it's not just necessarily the housing. We have to ensure that our young people have work opportunities, where they get a decent wage. We know that it's expensive to live in Suffolk County, so we have to try to create jobs, good-paying jobs, to keep our young people here so that they can raise a family. From a business perspective, how do we retain companies in Suffolk County? How do we encourage companies to come to Suffolk County if our workforce is aging out and a significant portion of our young people are leaving? You know, they do the studies. 10, 15 years down the road, you have a lot of your workforce leaving or not, you know, it's going to put them in an environment that's not conducive to staying or coming to Suffolk County. We have to change that. And you guys have a lot of, you know, a big part in doing that, in shaping plans that come forward in Suffolk County and through our different municipalities. And you certainly have a voice. And that's, I think, if there's a one key component that I want to make, express today is that express your voice, because it's so important. As a legislator, I represent, you know, a small portion of Suffolk County. You know, I'm in the southwest portion of the county, right on the national border. I know what's important for my area, and I pay attention to what goes on throughout Suffolk County, but you guys really dig into the details. And it's important that you advise all the lawmakers of what you feel is important after you do your due diligence, because we do listen, and it's important that you do that. And as I said, you know, it's important to create housing opportunities, work opportunities, but we have to be respective, respectful of our history, our agricultural history, environmental impacts of the things that we're looking at and discussing as well. So we can't put our priorities... we can't push forward with our priorities without a conscious decision of the impacts that it may have environmentally and even on the community, socially and economically. We have to consider all those factors together. It's important. It's a whole... it has to be a holistic approach, you know. I love Long Island. I went off, I joined the military. I was in Texas. I was in Georgia for a little bit, and always missed Long Island. Couldn't wait to come back home, but there are a lot of great places throughout the country. Some of my friends, six of my closest friends, have left New York in the past 34 months. It's not because they felt that our beaches were diminishing, or the quality of the water was diminishing, or anything of the sort. It's because, solely because they wanted the better opportunity to raise their families. It's more... it's less expensive to buy a house and raise a family in Florida, for instance, where some of my friends, in Spring Hill and Orlando and Altamont Springs in North Carolina. I live in Texas. I bought a four-bedroom, two-bathroom house. We had 90 square feet, $85,000. You know, you can barely buy a bathroom in New York City. $2,200 in taxes, by the way. New community, excellent. You know, my wife and I have been looking at a first-hand home in the Southampton area. Taxes are $17,000, you know, by the water, which she's a little hesitant now, I have the SuperSonar standing, but it's, you know, there are other places, obviously, that are more conducive to, you know, raising a family. Yes, the incomes are lower, but the cost of living is lower as well. So we have to do something to change that dynamic, and it has to be housing and jobs. They have to... they go together, hand in hand. If you put them in a home, if they can afford it, they have to have a job to pay for it. And we have to encourage expansion of our bus system, to keep cars up the road, you know, fast commuting and those types of opportunities. And I know there's a concern of urbanizing, if you will, our communities, but the communities of 1960 will not suffice for our needs today. That doesn't mean that we urbanize our suburban desires, but we certainly have to look at it from a different framework. And we're losing our young people, and we can't allow that to happen. When our CEOs are surveyed, and the majority of them say the reason why, the top reason why they're staying here is because they have family connections, to me, that's not a sustainable economic plan. We just seen with the Deco, I have a friend that works there, the CEO lives in Florida, so they're shipping off to Florida, closing headquarters here, or offices here, excuse me. You know, we have to address that. Family, obviously, is important, you know, for a CEO, and that's a good reason to stay, but it should be because the environment is cost-effective for a business to survive here in Long Island. Of course, we benefit from the proximity of New York City, one of the greatest financial markets in the world, cultural markets in the world. We have to use those assets in a way that draws companies to Suffolk County and retains those companies as well. So I applaud you for all your efforts. I know you're doing a tremendous job, and whatever way I can assist or the legislature can assist, we stand by to work with you and to do that. But this is our county, you know, not mine, not yours, but ours, and we have to do all that we can do to make it what it can be. To use an old army phrase, be all you can be, right? I think they changed the army of one now, but we certainly have... we love where we live, and we have to retain its full wonder. Again, thank you for that you do. I promise to be short. I was on vacation, but I came in to speak. I made a commitment to the usual, your chairman, to come before you. Hasn't been the greatest. It snowed on Monday, it's raining today, but whatever. But thank you. I'll take your questions if you have any.
First of all, thank you for interrupting your vacation. Very much appreciate it, and your house, et cetera. Any questions for the Presiding Officer? One thing in particular I want to emphasize, you know, for you is we have the comprehensive plan for the county. There hasn't been one in 40 years or something like that, and what that's led to is a lot of sort of ad hoc decisions, which sometimes are good and sometimes are bad, but aren't consistent with each other. And so now we're finally moving and actually creating this comprehensive plan, which hopefully will, you know, be a strategic plan that can address some of the strategic challenges I think you pointed out so well. At the end of the day, a comprehensive plan, a strategic plan for the county is only as strong as a county executive and a legislature who are willing to sort of take that as a blueprint. And at the end of the day, it's a game plan, you know, it's a playbook, if you will. And obviously, coaches call audibles and those things happen all the time, but our goal with the Planning Commission certainly is to create that strategic plan work with you guys, with the county executive, so that there's kind of a clearly defined mission and a clearly defined steps to get there, whether it's housing, whether it's new jobs, whether it's infrastructure financing, and, you know, we talked about some of the agricultural issues we're facing and things like that. But at the end of the day, like I said, we need to... we need a legislature and a county executive who are, you know, focused on that plan and are moving it forward. So we look forward to working with you to finalize that plan, so make sure we're all on the same page, and then look to your leadership and the county executive's leadership going forward to make sure that we're creating policies that advance those issues.
Absolutely. I, you know, from my days of even being in the military, you know, we planned, we planned, we planned, you know, to the nth degree. I fully believe that we have to have a comprehensive plan. We have to have a roadmap to where we want to go and let it... allow it to be flexible enough to make changes and to adapt to circumstances of the day, but certainly we should have a general direction of where we want to go and how we want to get there. I had put forward legislation to even, in a certain extent, comprehensive, I called it a visioning plan for county departments. And how does a department plan, you know, make a five-year plan when they're going from year to year? You know, homelessness for DSS, homelessness may be an issue one year, you know, you know, mental health issues may be another issue for another year, so we're kind of piecemealing, we're throwing monies at not-for-profit organizations, but we're not coming up with a comprehensive approach to tackle, say, homelessness and mental health issues, because those are conjoined together, believe it or not. People... mental health just can't work, can't sustain themselves, they end up homeless. So we're kind of throwing monies at, you know, at certain issues, but not really coming up with a long-term plan to address it and to alleviate it. And so I totally believe in a comprehensive plan approach. I think it's appropriate. I think it's right on, and I assure you, you get the support of the legislature as well to come up with a plan that maps out our vision for the future.
That's great. And I think that, to your point, the departments sort of become that next step, and sort of what's the game plan, and what's everyone aiming towards, and then how do you break that down into what each department needs to do to help fulfill that or move towards that plan in their own realm, you know, in their own area responsibility? What do they do to move the law forward on whether it's housing, their jobs?
And with that, you can put in metrics to measure performance, you know, for a government, you know. We should be accountable. We have taxpayer monies that are at stake, and we should be accountable for accomplishing certain things, or accomplishing everything that we do, or at least accounting for our failures. So, yes, and I think it all fits in together.
We're hoping to kind of get through this drafting process, I would say, over probably the summer timeframe with consultants, and then, you know, with a few other pieces of it, whether it's the water, the clean water, you know, the agriculture plan and then the water plan, to layer those all in. Those are all important pieces of it, and then have something, you know, that's available for discussion and debates, or I would say, sometime over the summer slash, you know, maybe towards the end of the summer, so.
Great. Looking forward to seeing.
And perhaps, you know, from your guys' end, you could identify one or two legislators who would sort of be the... I mean, Kara, you know, Legislature Han sort of are, you know, has been involved because she's the head of the EPA, and there's one or two others that you want to sort of have in the mix so that you guys have a hand, at least kind of knowing some of the specifics that are being thought of, so that you can, you know, give us your feedback.
Certainly.
So I'll link to you on that. Other thoughts or questions the folks have? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Appreciate your leadership and congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
All right. We'll move to our administrative agenda. We have two items on the agenda. We have the Meadows at Gatbank and then Economic Landing. We'll take the Meadows first, I believe, Andy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We do have two matters that rose to regional significance that are suitable for debate with the commission. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background before we go into the two referrals. This month, the division processed about 125 referrals, two of them which we will discuss today, rose to level of significant regional significance. The remains of them...
Thank you for sharing that. That's important for us to know every month, just to understand what understands all the work you guys are doing. It's also good for us to sort of almost, we need to see, not need, I think it would be useful to see sort of a graph, my third, my third, my third here, just a graph, sort of like, you know, with that data point over time, like where the referrals are going on a, you know, trailing twelve-month basis or something like that, just to get a sense of how things are going in our county in terms of referrals, as a rough estimate of sort of economic sort of development.
Yes, I'd like to give that to you. In anticipation of something like that, I just wanted to give you the first quarter results. We did 101 in January, we did 116 in February, and we're doing 125 in March, so for the first quarter, it looks like we're on a trend. If we do about 100 a month, we're doing about 1,000 applications a year, which is still less than 50% of our peak in the boom. And just, we missed you guys last month, I don't know if you missed us, but I just wanted to give you a little overview of, you know, the things that we're doing, you know, of those 125 referrals that we take in, some of them are secret referrals, some of them are, you know, site plans, change of zones, variances. Ted does the bulk of all our referrals, he does the subdivisions, he does the area and use variances, so most of the stuff that gets done and you don't hear about is being processed by Ted. You may know that I do the change of zones, the site plans, the special exception type referrals. That's all supported by our clerical, Christine, and John, you see, gets involved when we get to production, when we put the reports together, we need to get the graphics into the report, and get that to you, and as well as the presentation during the day, that's what John does. So that's not the only thing that John does, though, he's our principal staff, the Council on Environmental Quality. So all the county actions that go through CEQ, John and I review, and John's the principal staff that takes care of that, and because of that, he's also our secret expert in-house, so anything that this commission gets involved in related to secret, we work with John and CEQ on that. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of what's going on in the department, at least for the last month. You know that we're working with the comp plan, we're helping with it, the project manager managing the transfer of development rights study, and we're just about done by the end of this month, we should be done with that, as well as the Comac Road bypass study, we should be done with that as well.
What's the latest on the, on the comp plan side of things? We have AKRF, like I mentioned, was, their contract was up, but it looks like we're making an extension, is that the latest?
An extension is in the works for that, Whit and Sarah are leading the charge on that, so I really don't have too many details on that. So then, we do have two matters that trigger regional significance with the commission. The first matter is the Meadows at Yappank that is referred to us from the town of Brookhaven. The commission's jurisdiction is that it is adjacent to County Route 46 and New York State Route 495, and it's also within the Central Pine and Barren Zone. The referral from the town of Brookhaven is for the subdivision approval of approximately 322 acres of land into four lots, and site plan approval for the construction of 240 rental apartment units on approximately, that's a typo, it's about 17.63 acres. This referral is considered Phase One of the overall plan reviewed and approved by the Suffolk County Planning Commission September 7th, 2011. The prior referral to the Suffolk County Planning Commission was for a change of zone request on the subject property totaling the total subject property of 332.37 acres from J2 and L1, the Plan Development District. The PDD plan proposes a mix of uses totaling 1,032,500 square feet of commercial space, including a hotel, restaurant, retail space, office, flex industrial space, and 850 units of attached housing. The proposed subdivision will create, as I mentioned, a total of four parcels. Parcel one is intended to allow the construction of 240 apartments, residential apartments, clubhouse, garage and storage, parking, and community amenities. Parcel two will be developed as a recharge basin, consistent with Town of Brookhaven requirements. The recharge basin will be designed to accept drainage runoff from existing, we developed Yappank Woods Boulevard, that right-of-way area. Parcel three will be utilized for the construction of sewage pumping station in accordance with Suffolk County Department of Health Services and Suffolk County Department of Public Works requirements. The remaining acreage is intended to be developed in the future, consistent with the requirements and guidelines of the Town of Brookhaven-approved PDD. This area will be subject to future land division applications. Maybe I could just go through the slides now, just to take a look at that. I did want to mention that some of the numbers in the staff report are a little bit jumbled, we took information from EAFs, the site plan, all the information when we put into the site plan, we did a rookie mistake, didn't check our math, so the numbers don't add up. But suffice it to say, the subject property is 17 acres, which is a piece of that overall development. Okay, and that would be situated in the bottom right? Oh, that's right, it's not, it doesn't work. Yeah, disappears, wow. Okay, so we'll bring in the old wooden pointer for next slide, but in the bottom southeast corner of the subject property is where this particular development will happen, it's taking place as part of that large tax map parcel.
So everything outlined in red is what you're saying?
No, it's only a portion of what's outlined in red. It's a portion, that parcel's going to be subdivided into four lots, and the residential component is in the bottom right-hand corner. Excellent. Okay, so that's just a little bit of a zoom in on the, you may recall the overall property back when, Par Meadows and the adjacent property to the east. Next slide. Okay, this is an oblique, just showing you the condition of the property as it is today. Next slide.
How far down the road is B&amp;L's, is it about a mile? Or I know there were properties right across the street, but is the entrance?
Yeah, the entrance is way up the way, I'm not quite sure, maybe it's a mile, somewhere around there.
I can tell you someone's been there 5,000 times. It's about maybe a quarter mile up on the right-hand side, on the east side of that road.
Yep.
Maybe half, but not maybe.
This slide shows the zoning, the two parts, the prior zoning was L1 to the left and J2, it has all been rezoned to PDD, Plan Development District. Next slide. Okay, that's the subject property in the school district. Okay, this is the subject site plan, just to orientate you, and I can't, if you just rotate this a little bit to your left, okay, you can see that William Floyd Parkway would then run north-south or up and down, so William Floyd Parkway's running along the bottom, north is to the right, so it's just back up. So this thing is twisted a little bit, so you would want to reorientate this a little bit.
Why don't you just point out where, and so the expressway would be on what side?
The expressway is running along the bottom of the slide there, and William Floyd Parkway is running top of the box.
Schematic.
Okay. Okay, so we just turn it to the right, so then you can see that there are.
Andy, I think they're pointing the second one more.
No?
Yeah, it kind of works.
Your aim is just on the.
I don't know, every time I hit the screen, it disappears.
Well, we see it, maybe you don't see it.
It's weird, yeah.
I don't see it that clear.
It's got to be the angle we're looking at.
Only us with special vision.
Well, there's four lots, this is the development lot, this is the lot for the recharge, sorry, the pump station and stormwater pond, this is the third lot for an additional stormwater area, and then the remaining fourth lot is the rest of the development PDD. Okay, so it's a four-lot subdivision, one lot for the residential, one lot for the pump station and stormwater pond, one lot for the other stormwater pond, and then the remainder of the property is the fourth lot, to be developed later on.
And that, there's no timetable always, the first lot, there's no timetable on that fourth property?
No, there isn't.
And there's nowhere on that schematic where they've actually used green methodologies, it's just the stormwater ponds?
That's correct.
Awesome.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so we went up to the site, we took a look, this is a view of the access road off of William Floyd, known as, oop. This is Yappank Woods Boulevard, this is an existing right-of-way that provides access to the Whispering Pines development to the north. Next slide. So this is a look from the subject property, across looking north to Whispering Pines development. And this is now looking east towards William Floyd Parkway, the access to the subject property is along the right. This is looking into the subject property at ground level, this is approximately where the entranceway into the property will be, later on, we'll see that there's a wetland, small wetland pond to the east, right there, this is another view of the property. You know, over the decades, the property has gone from being cleared to revegetating, and this is the state of the property today, as it looks in its various stages of successional regrowth.
Is this the same property that we, and you'll remember this, knowing your institutional memory, was the Breslin Mall, this is the Breslin Mall property?
Yes.
No, this is Par Meadows.
Par Meadows, it's had several iterations over the years.
This is the most talked-about piece of property in eastern Suffolk County, but most plans probably closed it.
Right. Next slide. Okay, so this is the accessway into the property, that's looking out of the subject property, so that would be looking east towards William Floyd Parkway, and this is the road Yappank Woods Boulevard that we're taking the picture from. Next slide. Okay, and again, this is now looking north of William Floyd Parkway at the entrance, this is looking south along William Floyd Parkway, next slide. This is the subject property from, I believe, the expressway, next slide. There is an access point that is going to come from the service road of the LIE, you can see on the site plan, that is proposed to be improved as part of this phase, it's approximately where the hotdog truck is, this is looking east along the service road of the LIE, next slide. This is looking west along the service road of the LIE, you can see that the service road ends, so that'll be reworked as part of the development. Next slide. Okay, so that's all of them, so let me get back to them. So we have any questions on the slides?
It's already been cleared, and then some of it's obviously regrow, regrowth and stuff, but it's been.
Yes. The site has been heavily impacted, you know, during the prior uses, and then it was cleared for anticipation of this particular project, and then over the years, decades, it has reverted back to a natural state while the development projects continue on in the deliberations of the town. During Phase 1A construction, the main site entrance and central boulevard will commence, as I pointed out on the slides, and subsequent phases, this road will be extended westward through the entire project, forming the spine of the overall development. A connecting road will also be constructed between the new central boulevard and the existing Yappank Woods Boulevard. Traffic improvements are intended to take place at the intersection of Yappank Woods Boulevard and William Floyd Parkway, as well as on William Floyd Parkway itself, and this is all subject to the review and approval of the Suffolk County Department of Public Works. Sanitary waste generated by the proposed Phase 1 development will be treated by the existing Durad Sewer Treatment Plant to the north. To transfer the flow from the proposed development to the treatment plant, a pump station will be constructed just south of the new site driveway. The project will be served by public water, supplied by Suffolk County Water Authority. In response to comments in the Suffolk County Planning Commission Approval Resolution of September 7th, 2011, the applicants have submitted a Compliance with Suffolk County Planning Commission Recommendations Report with respect to a 20% affordable component to the residential element of the plan. It is the applicant's position that while the remaining units above 10% affordable are market-grade rentals, these units will be affordable to those with incomes at or below 120% of HUD median income limits. In addition, the applicants have provided an affordable rental housing program at the Meadows at Yappank, Program Guidelines Report, in response to the second comment of Suffolk County Planning Commission Resolution. If you recall, you wanted to see the program for phasing in the affordable housing, affordable rental housing. So with all that in mind, considering the history of the project, and the fact that the commission reviewed it once before, we reviewed it under secret as well, and provided secret comments, staff is recommending approval of the four-lot subdivision, and the site plan with the following comments. It's the belief of the staff that the proposed subdivision, the site plan referred to Suffolk County Planning Commission, is substantially consistent with the approved Plan Development District zoning, reviewed and approved by Suffolk County Planning Commission, and subsequently approved by the Town of Brookhaven. The second comment is that the applicant should be encouraged to review the Plan Commission publication and the study of man-made ponds in Suffolk County. The third comment is that the applicant should review the commission's publication on managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. Fourth comment is that the applicant should review the commission's guidebook with respect to energy efficiency. The fifth comment is that the applicant should review the commission's guidelines on public safety. Six being reviewing the commission guidelines on universal design, and the seventh being pedestrian and bike access to County Road 46, which is William Floyd Parkway, and to property adjacent to the north, west, and south should be explored from the subject development. Bike trails and bike racks for storage should also be considered, and that is the recommendations to staff, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate that. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Andy, thank you very much. It's almost as if the presiding officer had looked into this application on his own in his presentation. It really does provide everything that he was saying is much needed in Suffolk County, whether it's economic job creation, or affordable housing, housing stock in general, it seems like this application does encompass all of that, so with that thorough review and the fact that we've seen this several times now on site plan, the fact that it is creating such economic activity, it provides a mix of housing, and it's doing so all in a very balanced position with the environment, from what I understand from this report, and I believe, based on the fact that there is no opposition in this room, with a, with a plan of this magnitude, I think says a lot about the fact that there's a lot of support for this. So with that, I believe this is a good development for not just the Town of Brookhaven, but also for the county in general, and Andy, I appreciate your comments, and I'd like to see this moved on. I would make the motion right now at this point, but would you like to have dialogue first?
Why don't we allow a conversation?
Why don't we have democracy?
But you can circle back anytime you need to.
Thank you, it's good to know where we stand with you. I certainly agree with you, this is a fundamentally important project in a lot of ways, it is one of, I think, the largest in eastern Suffolk County in a very long time, and is perhaps, you know, the long-stored history of Par Meadows and some of the fights that went on over the years with this piece of property, maybe at the end of the day, ended in a good result, because we have the kinds of building now that's needed now. And by that, I mean sort of the affordable component, as well as the housing, as well as, as we know, it's always been a great location in the county for connectivity, both north, south, east, and west, to provide places for folks to live who are working on the east end, as well as those who are further up west. It's mixed use, and I think the applicants be congratulated for, you know, putting some thought into doing this in a, in a way that meets sort of the modern needs, where it is mixed use and it does have a variety of different kinds of, you know, housing, whether it's some rental, some ownership, and, you know, like, we can quibble about, you know, we want to have, you know, which is coming first, the rental or the ownership, and, you know, we want to have a mix, or we had suggested a mix happen in different phases, but you know what, at the end of the day, this is a good plan, and it is a good location, and it meets regional needs in a way that hadn't been met in a very long time by a project of this size. So I do agree with Commissioner Kelly, this is important and a good thing. I also thank, appreciate the applicant certainly addressing our concerns, I did have a question, Andy, about their document, which was reactions or response to the Planning Commission concerns. I certainly think engaging the housing partnership obviously is a good and important step, but their document, Compliance with Suffolk County Planning Commission Recommendation, I did have a question about, Andy. It talked about 20% standard, which was, just to bring everyone who hasn't been around for a while back to speed on this, there was, it used to be the County Planning Commission standard that there was 20%, that it encouraged 20% on the change of zone for affordable housing. That changed when the state legislation was adopted, that, what was it called, Long Island?
Long Island Workforce Housing Act.
Long Island Workforce Housing Act, whatever it was, which stated the 10% standard, and in that happened, we, for a little while, sort of maintained the idea that we'd like to sort of aspirationally encourage applicants to still reach for more than 10%. And so that's why you saw on this application, a comment that related to, so it wasn't a condition, it was a comment relating to try to hit the historical standard, 20%. So the applicant is saying that they clearly meet the 10%, and then they say that the 20% is, they argue, attained because of, because of the pricing, and I just wanted to get staff's reflection on that piece of it. I wasn't sure, I didn't see anywhere, at least in the materials that we have, that indicates what the rent will be for the market rate that I noticed, so I just wanted to.
I don't have that information readily available, Mr. Chairman. We did not delve into the affordable housing issue in too much detail, because as you know, that standard was evolved out of the guidebook, so staff really had not much guidance to recommend to the commission with regard to the affordable housing issue.
I just reflect on, this, like, I agree, this was a different time when we last saw it, it was before our guidebook was revised and updated, so it obviously went a different standard from a previous standard, we don't have that same standard anymore, I understand that. I was just trying to get a read on it, because they say that 10% is affordable under the HUD standards, and I see that they lay that out very clearly, and then it talks about how another 10% is, would be affordable to those who are 120% or less of median area income and median income, and I just wasn't sure what those numbers were, or they say, and I just don't show it, that's all.
Right. We did get, you got another inquiry on that, on the whole affordable thing, we referred the documents over to our Affordable Housing Director, and they have not heard back, but I can provide you with a follow-up memo on that, if you'd like. back, but I can provide you with a follow-up memo on that if you'd like.
Well, we got the slide today, so I was just wondering if we had any information. I mean, at the end of the day, it was a comment, it was an aspirational comment, just trying to remember it, and hoping that, you know, and they do claim that they, that their units, you know, at least some of the units will be affordable for those 120% or less, which, okay, you know, I just was wanting, wanted to see something in writing about it. Okay, appreciate that. Other thoughts, comments, questions? Mr. Chairman.
I would use a microphone, but Dave feels he needs two, and I'm not, so. Thank you.
These are called microphones, Adrian.
Very thoughtful. Okay, just one quick comment, and this is mostly for my good friends John Finn and Mike Kelly, but I just want people to know that decades ago, before the land was cleared, there was a group of about 15 people that actually went there to rescue turtles before the land got cleared. So I just want to know, some of us...
Rescue and plant, what is it?
No, we didn't plant them, we actually did rescue them, Mike. Thank you for that point of clarification, however. Okay, Andy, couple of questions. One is, and I know you're struggling with the pointer there, but can you show on the property where the wetlands pond is? So I would have a better idea. So points like that, that's...
The top right corner of the slide, the top right corner of the slide, you can see some dash lines. Those are the setbacks from where the wetland is. Do we have a wetland slide?
Yep.
And we do have a wetland slide.
Andy, is that the Phase 2, or is that off the property altogether?
No, that is a part of, that is part of later phases. So you can see, there's a wetland piece right there. We came into the site when we were looking at the pictures, we came in that trail at the very top of the subject property. You see that little blue dot? That's a little wetland pond right there. It's regulated by the state.
Okay, so it is a regulated wetland? That was really my question.
Yes.
Okay, and there are all the setbacks?
Yes. B16 is the number for the one.
Okay.
Brookhaven 16.
Okay. The other thing is, do you know...
It's on a USGS quad, it's up beyond the Brookhaven quad, number 16.
Map, in other words. So map, wetland by the DDC.
Right.
Right, so they have jurisdictional control. Okay, where is the point of discharge for the STP, and do you happen to know what size it will be?
The point of discharge, I do not know. It is north of the subject property. You can see part of it, the Whispering Pines subdivision. I think in the upper left-hand corner of the subdivision may be the location of their STP. Wish I had a pointer, I could show.
So they're going to connect to that one?
So, right, so the pump station is at the bottom of the circle by red, it would be in the lower right corner there, and it's going to pump it up to the...
Okay. And that was it. Mike is telling me the plant was just upgraded, that was going to be another question. If you do, I know you're not...
It was recently upgraded. I had the capacity numbers, I can probably find them for you.
Okay, but the answer to that is it was upgraded to be able to handle the increased capacity.
Yes, it was.
Okay. Stormwater runoff. I have to say, it's a grave disappointment that this doesn't use any green methodologies. This is a perfect example of where they should be putting in rain gardens, they should be putting in bioswales, and instead of these huge recharge basins, which we know are not as effective as we need them to be. So we can, and I know you made that in the comments, and I appreciate that, but maybe we could expand upon that comment a little bit more, that this really is an ideal location for it, and they have the room, they have the ability, and it's easy to do, and it's actually cheap, cheaper than recharge basins.
Certainly, and I think we can certainly take solace in the fact that other large developments are doing that now. So this is not, you know, this is no longer sort of cutting edge, it's sort of what you should be doing.
Yes.
So.
Right, we want them to keep up with the Joneses.
And I know that, you know, they may have, you know, A, it's easy enough to do, B, particularly when they're looking at the Phase 2, which will come through, it would be nice to see that, you know, in the plan. Yeah, that'll be the next one, if you'd like. All right, Andy. Got Adrian, Andy?
I was just going to say that, you know, in a rare moment in Planning Commission history, I agree with Mike saying that this plan...
Note the date and time, please.
But, you know, the original proposal for this property was a mall. I don't know if everyone knows that, was a huge, another huge shopping mall, like Smith Haven Mall. So this fulfills a need, at least this fulfills a societal need with the housing and the mixed use, as opposed to the mall, which, John Finn's going to have a heart attack, which I feel we don't need. So at least we can take solace in that.
That's what I was trying to say, like, the fact that this got delayed and went through a lot of hoops, and now, at least it's reflecting a modern need, and I think that's a very good thing, and instead of done it, I think it'll be in a relatively good way.
Mr. Chairman, just to summarize that, am I getting that you want to modify comment number three, make that stronger, or are you looking to change that into...
Yeah, if we could add something, yeah, it talks about, I would just say that we would say this is, the Planning Commission identifies this as an ideal location. And so, and that the planning, you know, and maybe we can get rid of the word encourage, but say, and therefore petitioner should review and apply where appropriate, and that's in there, but I would just say this is an ideal location for that.
I have a little bit more, but... I just had that the Planning Commission identifies the site as an ideal location for green methodologies. The subject property has the room, and the ability is available, and that green methodologies tend to be cheaper than standard recharge bases.
Period.
I like that.
Therefore, comma, that petitioner should, as it says, right? Okay, any objection to adding that?
Make it a modification instead of...
No, that was not the closing. Any objection to adding that? Seeing none, so we'll modify the comment. Okay. Commissioner Finn was next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were cradling the mic. No, I just want to, I want to thank Adrian for bringing that little history lesson, but when I look at this site, this is exactly why Long Island is in the condition that it is today. You mentioned a mall, this project, this applicant has had this property for 30 years. They wanted to put a mall, and everybody in the world thought a mall would be regional significance, and it was warranted, and they, and guess what happened? It's called Tanger Mall, and they bypassed this piece of property and went to Riverhead. And this was the earmarked piece of property for that. So we all know how wildly successful the Tanger Mall is, and there are millions of square feet, but that was earmarked here. So fast forward 25 years later, and here we are. And so, the truth is, we need 100 of these projects on Long Island to deal with the property. Now, the reality of that happening, this took 25 years to get to the point where we are now. So when we hear the presiding officer talk about all the buzzwords that everybody hears, affordability, sustainability, rain drain, what, something becomes affordable is when you have a choice. There are no choices, no choices on Long Island, because other than Mr. Kelly and the New Village project in Patchock, that's making up the lion's share of housing stock in our great county of Suffolk County. And that's why we don't have affordability, it's flat-out supply and demand. And this is 240 units of rental housing, which is a drop in the bucket. And most likely, this project, like every other rental project that's being bought in the market on Long Island, will be rented by the time they're able to get a certificate of occupancy. New Village is 290 units, and Patchock, they have 2,000 people on a waiting list to rent, not to get into a lottery to rent, to rent. So it just speaks to the mountaintops on how we have to change the paradigm of housing. And the only way to do that is let the market work and let the housing stock, we need options. And we should talk as a commission, and Andy, I'm glad you brought it up, because I, unfortunately, I couldn't make last month's hearing, but there were no applicants, and I saw that spoke volumes as a planning commission of the size of Suffolk County, that there were no applicants on the agenda. But you mentioned that there are, there's a lot of work, a lot of good work going on at the Planning Commission, but I think when we talk about comprehensive plans, we have to start talking about how many units are being built. Couple of years ago, we had the Affordable Housing Commissioner speak for us, he couldn't answer the question, how many affordable housing units did we build that year? I think that's got to be on the tip of everybody's tongue, because when you look at where we were and where we need to go, I think these are the things that where the rubber has to start hitting the road at some point. And then we can address all these issues, because my business is in the commercial world, it's directly impacted by the residential housing supply. We're hearing from a lot of executives at these large companies, they can't attract quality people to fill the desks that they want, because they can't, the matrix doesn't work. You can't afford to live here. And what does that mean?
Mr. Chairman, I just, as a matter of correction for the record, the commission did receive 116 referrals from the 43 municipalities last month, just none of them triggered the regional significant criteria that this commission has established, therefore, none of them came to you for deliberation.
Oh, yeah, no, Andy, I'm glad you cleared up, because I said, even though we didn't, none were debated at the panel, but there were plenty of activity going on at the planning level. So I'm glad you brought that up at the beginning of the...
Yeah, just to be clear, you know, we, a few years ago, put into place these regional significance criteria, this commission didn't weigh in on every single little application that was going on around the county, and that was saving our time, the county's time, and perhaps most importantly, the applicant's time.
Absolutely.
And we should weigh in on these kinds of things where they're bigger. And by weighing in, it could mean we can encourage changes, but we can also congratulate folks when they do a good job, and I think it's important that we be able to say that this is the kind of thing we need to see more of. Again, you can quibble with little things around this, but the bottom line is, as Commissioner Finn said, this is the future, and this is what we need to see more of in Suffolk County. You got to be in the right places, and it's got to make sense on a bunch of levels, whether it's water and transportation, et cetera. This is ideal. It's in the right place, you know, from a transportation perspective, you know. Again, we can quibble about, you know, some issues, but bottom line is, we need more of these. So, anyway. Other thoughts, comments, questions, or other considerations? Commissioner Barrett.
I have a number of comments, so please bear with me. First of all, it's my first time seeing this, so I appreciate what people are saying, that this is a huge improvement over past. I looked at it as a new hamlet, because it's got the scale of that. So at first, I was really excited, because this could be an opportunity to really showcase what a new hamlet looks like and how it's put together, but I think it falls way short of that. The very first thing is wastewater treatment. They're hooking up to an existing private plant for a housing, an existing housing. They're going to be introducing commercial restaurant uses, it's going to be a different kind of influence. I really have doubts of, you know, if it's being designed for the kind of use that it's going to get. I did a quick calculation, and Andy gave me some information, and basically, as of right, if you did a housing efficiency, it's in a sensitive groundwater area, where it's only 300 gallons per day allowed, and that would have yielded you over the whole thing, not just the section, 157 single unit homes. And what's proposed for this section is like 776 homes. Well, I also looked at the housing units, and if you assume two people per dwelling unit, so that's, I think that's underestimating the actual loading, after treatment, the absolute nitrogen loading is going to be double what it should be. So I really think we need to introduce a modification that says the nitrogen pounds that are coming out of the treatment will meet the water carrying capacity of the land. So it's going to need a higher level of treatment and/or reuse than what this is. And I'm not seeing the acreage for recharge, because if you recharge near the top, you could use it for irrigation. There are ways of dealing with this, so I think that has to be improved, because otherwise we're polluting the waters we're trying to protect. So that's one thing.
Yeah, on all that, I would say we had a, back when this first came through in 2011, I think we had probably our longest commission meeting ever, talking about a lot of these issues. It was, you know, and it was a very high-profile sort of thing at the time, but, you know, there was a lot of debate, a bad debate about pine barrens credits, and, you know, obviously acknowledging that there's certainly an increase in density beyond what you typically see because of this development. But I believe that the commission's, if I remember right, you see in our resolution, we certainly approved it virtually unanimously at the end of the day, with various, you know, comments and conditions. But the, I think, believe the consideration that everyone around this table at that time, 2011, was because of where it's located and because of the need, that this was, you know, appropriate. And of course, the Town of Brookhaven did adopt that PDD, and it's now, you know, so this is, you know, as of right, and then the Health Department needs to look at, obviously, from the water perspective.
But we're not treating to the level of what our current benchmark is. Basically, the load is too much for the level of treatment, so it needs more treatment or reuse in order to, and, you know, supposedly, water is one of our main things, and protecting it, this is doable. I'm not saying let's not do the project, but let's treat the wastewater properly so that we meet the original intention of Article 6. So let me go...
Yeah, okay, fine, once you've got it right.
In terms of, there's no mass transit, and we do have a good educational hub nearby, so I would make a comment that, you know, options are looked at to improve mass transit access.
Yeah, that, I think, is very appropriate. I think the staff, you recommended something on seven about sort of, you know, pedestrian access, but it is a sort of glaring point. Of course, look, I mean, this is decided by the county, you know, about where the resources, but the fact that this is going to be here should be an added leverage to increase the, you know, make that a node, or at least a stop on mass transit.
We would agree. Staff was surprised, we presumed that there was a bus route that ran up and down William Floyd Parkway, and when we was pointing out to us to check that, we found out that there is no bus route that runs up and down William Floyd Parkway. So there is a bus route seven, I think, that ends just south of the LIE on William Floyd, and then nothing goes up William Floyd, and there were bus routes that run east-west.
Just to be clear, the applicant can't, in the site plan, you know, I mean, they can have a, I guess, area to pull out or something like that, but there is no way to, the applicant to encourage the county. However, this planning commission could encourage the county to, you know, once it's built, for there to be additional mass transit connections.
The applicant...
Especially if everything else gets built there, I think it's really important that something does get built.
And I would think that would become relatively self-aware.
The applicant should be encouraged to contact Suffolk County Transit to discuss maybe alternating a route, but, you know, when you alter a route to make enough stuff, it has a ripple effect off and down the line, so it takes a discussion.
That's a budgetary thing that's beyond our purview, but certainly encouraging conversation about how to get mass transit there, whether it's altering, adding, or whatever.
And actually, this kind of density can offer van service to, like, key, that's what Economic Landing does, actually. So, you know, considering van access to mass transit or something like that, is totally appropriate for this density, I would say. And you've got employers that are very close, so it would cut down on car usage. The other thing is, the actual design of the layout and the roads, if this is a design for a new town, you've got the major traffic going to the commercial, cutting right through the residential, and the roads kind of cut it into four big sections, and people have to walk across huge parking lots to get to some of the uses. So as a community that could potentially cut trips because people live, work, you know, recreate there, I actually think that the site plan could be improved. So right now, I think it's car-centric instead of being hamlet-centric, and there's tremendous potential, and because you've got all the right uses, and you've got a good mix, but it's just not organized for a kind of walkable, coherent community. And I would just love for them to take another crack at rearranging the pieces. And then my last comment is about the affordability and the makeup of the housing. It seemed like there was a big emphasis on one bedroom, and they talked about, you know, the single young person and the elder person, even beyond the kind of age limited. And what I think there's a real need for, that I'm seeing, is for young families. And what I think there's a real need for, that I'm seeing, is for young families. And I would like to see that more as a mix. We keep on eliminating that, and those are the future. Those are the workers. Those are the ones that are providing the light blood. And I would like to start getting rid of that age-restricted housing and, you know, have more two- and three-bedroom in the mix.
Let me interrupt you for a second, because I want to, before Sarah leaves, just ask everyone to congratulate Sarah and the department on their work on Smart Cities. And she's running off to meet with the county executive, but want to particularly acknowledge that. So thank you. Congratulations, Sarah.
And we'll get a report on that when you're all done, right?
I already have a 14-page septic tour report. That's just...
That's what we really missed today, was the report on the tour.
I only came for the septic report.
Lenis, thank you for those notes.
All right. Sorry. Back to the size of the housing. Unit sizes. And age-restricted, sorry.
Yeah, I think it's been designed to sort of eliminate families, in a way. And I'd like to get rid of the age restriction. I'd like to see a little bit more two- and three-family. Because even single people, if they share a two- or three-bedroom, their costs are cheaper. It's more affordable, you know. So, and I didn't quite buy that that extra 10% was really affordable because it was at the upper limit, so it didn't really address anybody under 120%. So I don't know. I'm a little bit disappointed in that mix. I want to see housing for people, you know, and let them decide. Don't you decide who is going to live there. You know, give them the opportunity. So anyway, but I would strongly recommend that a modification be made about wastewater treatment because I think that's a huge issue, and we're spending all this time trying to protect water quality, and I'm not convinced on this. And then maybe just adjust some of the other comments to maybe include some of the other things.
Let me take the easy ones first, just to make sure we get everything. So the first one, I think, was mass transit. I'm sorry, Andy, did you want to respond at all, particularly to the age-restricted piece or anything?
No, the only, the only comment that I wanted to add to the record is that this project has been before the Suffolk County Sewer Agency last month or the month before, and it did receive approval. So I just wanted to add that as a fact to the record.
Thank you. On the mass transit piece, is there any objection to adding, you know, the comment encouraging the applicant to certainly speak with TPW about mass transit and potentially adding, you know, van service or something like that to mass transit? Any objection to that? So we'll put that in. Andy, you have that?
Yes.
All right. Now, Lenis, you also talked about removing the age restriction on, or... Removing the age restriction on the units. Andy, can you refresh us on what portion was age-restricted?
Unfortunately, Mr. Chairman, I don't have that information in front of me. Maybe the applicant can provide me, put some information. I'll get that right to you. Mr. Chairman, there are 300 age-restricted units for the entire total of the development project.
And that's actually in the zoning, isn't it?
That is in the zoning, yeah.
Okay. So that's done, actually. Yeah, no, I'm looking back at your old report from last time, Andy. It does say that right in there. It was part of the PDD. So that is done. So the last issue was with regard to the water quality modification. Lenis has suggested that we... Lenis, why don't you word it yourself, let me try to...
Basically, I'd like to see the wastewater treatment, whether it's on-site or improved oversight, also look at total pounds of nitrogen so that after treatment is compliant with Article 6 loading.
Look at nitrogen poundage?
Right. Because, see what happens when, like, if you have a sewage treatment plant in a sensitive area with a TMDO, they regulate both flow and total pounds, okay? And when we have a sensitive inland area, that always sometimes gets missed, that total poundage. And here we have a very sensitive groundwater situation, and it's not being protected because the actual pounds of nitrogen, even after treatment, is over double what Article 6 is for this.
The Health Department will look at Article 6 and determine whether it meets the standards.
Well, the regulations you just mentioned as well.
Maybe I can just jump in here a second. I got some information that, I was reminded that the applicants are building a new sewage treatment plant at the Doral site.
This is just for interim?
As it goes, this is interim. As it moves along, they will redesign the plant and build a new plant, and that plant will be designed for eight parts per million.
Eight PPM nitrogen?
Eight PPM.
Right, but it will still have a pound of nitrogen that exceeds the carrying capacity of the land right now. Even after treatment.
That's why they want pine barrens credits.
Yeah, but they only bought five, and there were like 775 more. So I just think the poundage issue hasn't been addressed.
I think the poundage issue hasn't been addressed as sort of a regional standard at all, which is perhaps a larger issue. And maybe, I know this talks in Albany about, you know, different kinds of what should happen on water issues, but I mean, you know, I think the bottom line is that we don't have a standard for us to apply. We have standards of other things, but we don't have a standard on water to apply. And that's one of the challenges, is sort of like to make one up when we're not, you know, an elected body. We're sort of, you know, applying rules and obviously looking at what we think is the best interest of the county. But, you know, for us to come up with a standard, I think, might be difficult or maybe not appropriate. I think it would be appropriate if someone wanted a standard that we could apply. And then in that case, I think that makes a lot of sense, what you're saying. With the absence of standard, you know, I think it's difficult for us to look at that. Particularly in a place where they did buy pine barrens credits. Now, they'd buy, you know, as many as some folks around this table wanted, but we also had a huge debate about the number of pine barrens credits they should buy, you know, when we went through this four years ago. And it was ultimately decided that it should be left to the Pine Barrens Commission to decide, along with the town of Brookhaven, about what number was appropriate. And five was determined to be appropriate. I don't know why, and I'm not privy to their, you know, their conversations, but that was determined to be appropriate for whatever reason.
Since you bring up the pine barrens, they did review this, they did approve it, and their analysis determined that at the property line, there'd be 2.5 parts per million of nitrogen in accordance with their standards, and that is why they approved it. But the standard does not have the expertise on wastewater. We do have a department of public works that are the experts, the Sewer Agency are the experts, so we can only defer to them and the expertise of Commissioner under Barry. So it is at your pleasure what you'd like to do with that.
Sure. Adrian, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to jump in and just say that, you know, to substantiate, you know, Lenis's concern, but also, you know, Dave saying, we don't have the tools yet to implement. I'm not sure what standard we use, and this is why many of us have been in a battle to get state legislation that would provide guidance for that. So the eight parts per million is better than what they normally do to put a nitrogen standard on it. Getting it to the site boundary at 2.5 parts per million is much better than we normally see. So all of that is a good step in the right direction. They'll be using some of the denitrification systems that are more sophisticated and more advanced. But it's what we don't know that can hurt us. So, but I feel like we're a little bit at a loss for admission here because we don't have the state bill. We don't have the guidance, and I'm not sure, even I don't know what standard we would apply and how the Health Department would do that. So for me, it's a bigger issue. It's not just the issue of this proposal. It's more of a bigger issue that needs to be tackled on a more holistic vantage point for groundwater protection. And this commission, whether you guys like it or not, at some point, will be, I think, implementing these types of regulations and these types of principles as we advance in our knowledge and understanding of what they are. So that's going to be, I think, a big part of the planning commission's role in the future.
It's just such a shame because it's such a wonderful opportunity to showcase a community that can deal with these things. None of them are.
According to the current standards, they are. You can go with the current standards.
But I'm talking about going beyond the current to what is needed in Florida.
Well, I mean, the applicant has a choice of whether to do that or not. There's rules, and you can go further than the rules if you want, and that's their choice. And I think Adrian's point, they've actually done, you know, this is pretty good, given our current rules. Obviously, it bides by the current rules, but it also is better than you typically see. It doesn't mean it's perfect. Doesn't mean that's where maybe things will go eventually.
Well, I just want to chime in and clarify what I also said, is that we don't know now what the standard should be. So, because we haven't looked hard enough. So we're permitting these types of projects in the absence of good knowledge. And ignorance is bliss. Ignorance is dangerous in this situation when you're dealing with groundwater. But I feel as a commission, we can only mandate with the body of knowledge we currently have and the rules and regulations we currently have.
All right.
No, we're just gonna...
Before you were ready, you weren't ready.
No, because I was letting Commissioner Esposito live mine to the sound of the press department. But the, to that point, and I think this is something that we should, we should stop and understand, is that with a project of this size, there's an upgrade of a treatment plan, Andy, correct, that's to the north?
Yes.
Now, what's happened is, when these, when these projects were built 30 years ago, they had a sewer treatment plant that most, probably in every county, is probably failing at this point. And the residents of these complexes can't afford to upgrade these complexes. So now you have a, we've got a double win scenario here again. We take, we take, we take an elderly family plant that is a private. The county doesn't have to intervene because the county's budget is, we know what the county's budget is. So we get the win of an upgrade of an existing plant to take care of those residents that are discharging, Gwen, this into the nitrate loading into the, into the sensitive area. And then we get the benefit of a new state-of-the-art, best technologies to accommodate this development. And then we get the economic impact in the, we all know, spend a dollar on a sewer, you get six-pack and economic development. So this is what, if you look at it, and Gwen, to your point, we don't have the luxury of having the rolls and the spec books and the data that a project of this would generate. You know, we got, we have a five-page sheet here, so it's kind of like, we are kind of in a vacuum or a little bit in the dark. So, but there are things that are kind of behind the scenes that are going on here that are making it a regional success for us, because we are all concerned about our groundwater, especially, you know...
Some more than others, John.
Well, I'm very concerned about it because, you know, we...
Put John in the more-than-others category.
Well, 20 years ago, we didn't know anything about sewers, nor did we care. But now it's the lifeblood of our island, so... But so, I think this is a win-win.
Okay, agreed. We have Mike Goffman at the final comment.
Two quick comments on this. I believe the information provided to us at the table here was, it's going to be eight parts at the SGP and maybe 2.5 at the boundary level. Well, I ran an EIS a couple of years ago, and in the general area, it's 2.1 parts coming from undeveloped land from natural sources. So if you're getting 2.5 parts at the boundary, that's pretty much the background level that's over there.
Wait, but how do you substantiate? How do you know that? Aren't they copying and...
Within about two miles or so. Within about two miles or so, Adrian. Within about two miles or so, near the Carmes River, the background nitrogen infiltration was about 2.1. Okay, that's the Foley nursing home area. That is where the rail yards are going to be. That's the BRT property and things like that. That was what the EIS determined. I know you may disagree with the numbers, but those were the actual numbers that were out there. That's about two miles away. The, I've looked at other proposed projects in this area in a different role, and the soils are essentially similar in that sense. So I'm just making an analogy, saying that if you're getting eight at the SGP, maybe at the leaching field, and you're getting 2.5 at the boundary, you look at what is naturally occurring in the area, again, going into the Carmes River. Those were the actual numbers. So getting to 2.5 is not a bad, is not a bad reach. I'm not saying it justifies going above what the natural level is or anything, but it's a good, good number. You've got to, you do have to look at those kinds of numbers, see what's actually occurring in the area. Also, in connection with something that Glenys was bringing up, there is no real connection here that I see with any future development. Each of these projects, or each of these PDDs, look to my eyes as if they're very, very insular and contained in and of themselves. This particular project, the map that we're looking at, doesn't look as if it might link up with the other areas that might be developed in the future. I don't know how that would be handled. But I'm just supporting what she's saying and noticing that it does exist. It is sort of what I would say balkanization. You've got to handle it, and, you know, you're going to end up with four or five hamlets, something like that, and they're not connected with each other. You can almost make a city out of this in its own way.
Well, there are, the roadways are being connected.
But you're so biased.
All right. Right now, we have a staff recommendation for approval with eight comments, one of which is modified, the groundwater rain methodologies. The eighth was added, Glenn's suggestion regarding mass transit. There's also a proposal on the floor that would be added modification regarding water quality with regard to looking at the nitrogen poundage that's produced by the project. Was there a second to that proposed modification? All right, seeing none? Maybe for a second.
That it was a modification that we would, that the applicant would have to... Boy, Glenys, you're at the board, and I have... To look at, look at the nitrogen poundage created...
John is physically holding my hand down.
Look at the nitrogen poundage created by the project. And it don't say who's...
To evaluate the nitrogen, to get poundage, to get closer to Article 6.
Well, yeah, they're already going to approve.
How about a second comment to look at enhancing even further the wastewater treatment?
Look at enhancing wastewater treatment for the project.
Considering total poundage. And just leave it as a comment.
Total nitrogen poundage. That's the motion for a comment, that the applicant would evaluate enhancing the wastewater treatment for the project with an eye towards total nitrogen, producing total nitrogen poundage, correct? Okay, that's the motion. Is there a second to the motion? Second to the motion. All in favor of adding that comment, please raise your hand.
Look at how they're...
Are you, are you, are you voting for this? That's four opposed. That's nine. Four to nine. So we will not add that as a comment. The staff recommendations for approval. We have eight comments that have been added. We have eight comments in total. All in favor, oh, sorry. Now, Mike Kelly, you can make a motion to approve the staff recommendation as amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff report as amended.
For approval with the comments, seconded by Matty Chartran. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's 12 opposed, one. It's 12 to one. Next item is Economic Landing South Hole. That's the Alzheimer Center and the... Are we ready on that?
While we're waiting, just a reminder, 8:00 AM on Monday, East Hampton Town Hall. Breakfast with the farmers. What's that? There you go. Mike's offered to pick anyone up, anywhere in the county he would like to. He's a ride.
Exactly. Andy, let's go.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the next regulatory item on the...
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the next regulatory item on the agenda is referral of iconic landing at Southhold, coming to us from the town of Southhold. The jurisdiction for the commission is that subject property is adjacent to New York State Route 25 and the Long Island Sound. The applicants are seeking an amended site plan approval from the town of Southhold Planning Board for the proposed construction of two new buildings at the iconic landing in existing continuing care retirement community. One building is an 87,426 square foot apartment building with 46 apartments proposed and a parking garage. The other is a 35,543 square foot nursing home with 33 beds. That includes, that building includes a reconfiguration of the parking lot. The overall subject property is 144 acres. The development site, however, is much, much smaller. Stormwater runoff from the proposed new development is intended to be collected via the existing system. Wastewater from the proposed continuing care retirement community addition is intended to be collected via the existing public sewage system and directed to a sanitary pump station on-site and then redirected to the waste, redirecting the waste to the Greenport Sewer Treatment Plant. Access for the proposed additions to the continuing care retirement community is to be from internal road network leading to two existing unrestricted, non-signalized ingress to 25, to New York State Route 25. State regulated wetlands occur on-site along the northern portion of the property. The coastal erosion hazard area map was reviewed and the site is, while adjacent to Long Island Sound, the subject development sites are outside the coastal erosion hazard area line. With regard to the staff analysis and general municipal law considerations and inter-community issues, since this is an on-site improvement, it's the belief of the staff that the proposed expansion of residences and healthcare facilities at the iconic landing, which is an existing continuing care retirement community, has been designed to be consistent with the existing character of the area. We'll take a look at some slides in a minute so you can see the character. With regard to local comprehensive plan recommendations, the 1985 Southhold Plan was reviewed. Southhold really is in the process of updating their 85 plan. They use the local waterfront revitalization plan as their de facto planning document for the moment. It is the belief of the staff that the proposed residential and healthcare facility expansions are situated in a location where the health-related infrastructure is available and accessible, and to that extent it is consistent with the plans. With regard to Suffolk County Planning Commission guideline consideration, it is indicated that stormwater runoff for the contemplated continuing care facility expansion will be collected via on-site systems. We did a site inspection, we didn't see much more than catch basins, dry wells, and some ponds on-site. So the applicant should be encouraged to review the planning commission's publication on the study of man-made ponds in Suffolk County and managing stormwater through natural vegetation and green methodologies. And we would recommend that they incorporate into their proposal for the expansions where practical design elements that are contained within those documents. State regulated freshwater wetlands occur on-site along the northern property line. Most land with limited freshwater wetlands, we believe, should be re-flagged in the field by a qualified expert, verified by the appropriate regulatory agencies, and depicted on all sketches, plans, and maps for the subject development. And then therefore all appropriate setbacks for the construction and clearing should be taken from the verified wetland line. There is no mention of the consideration of energy efficiency in the referral materials, and we believe the applicant should be encouraged to review the planning commission guidebook related to energy efficiency. There is little discussion in the referral to the commission regarding public safety, and we believe the applicant should take a look at our guidelines on public safety. So with the above in mind, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission's staff is recommending for this amended site plan approval with the following comments. Comment number one being that the land with limited wetland be flagged in the field, et cetera. Comment two, the applicant should be encouraged to review the planning commission publication on the study of man-made ponds. The third comment is that the applicant should review the commission's publication on managing stormwater or natural vegetation through green methodologies. The fourth comment is that the applicant review the commission's guidebook related to energy efficiency. And the fifth comment is that the applicant take a look at the commission's guidelines on public safety. So those are our recommendations. Let me just take a look at the slides since I forgot to do that before we went through the staff report. So what we have on the screen here is the location of the iconic landing's property. You can see it is well-developed, and it is quite a nice property. Next slide. Okay, to the west of the subject property is an existing farm. To the east you can see is an existing golf course. To the south is some sporadic development, there's a subdivision just to the south and east. Okay, this is an oblique, taking a look at the detached residential component of the iconic landing's continuing care retirement community. That's at the top left of the slide. You can see the shoreline, the bluff, you can see the small wetland system to the middle-right of the slide. Center of the slide, you can see the existing continuing care nursing facility. And that string of buildings on the far-right end of the slide is the existing apartments that are there. We have some more. So this is the regulated wetland, you saw an oblique shot of that just now, next slide. This is the zoning on the site, the zoning is HD, and the subject property is consistent with the zoning, I'm sorry, the subject use. That's the property of the school district, next slide. Okay, this is the site plan, you can see propose the two additions really. On the middle-left is the continuing care addition, and on the middle-top right is where the residential apartments will go. You can see that better in the staff report, next slide. Okay, so we did take a ride out to the site. This is the entrance from 25, looking north into the subject property. You should be aware that there's a historic structure on the property called Brecknock Hall. It's an 1851 constructed building by one of the descendants of William Floyd, the signer of the Declaration of Independence. So that is on the subject property, next slide. Okay, moving into the subject property, you can see this is, is that a view down on 25? That's a view looking west on 25, I believe, yes, at the site entrance, next slide. That's a view looking east on State Route 25 at the property entrance. Okay, moving into the subject property, there's sort of a center area that has these water features as part of the drainage system. It's a large open space area with trails that walk through it. Okay, there's another shot of that from one of the access roads, next slide. This would be from one of the internal roads heading to the left. You know, if you turn that road and head left, you'd be heading north towards the development site. Okay, this is the existing continuing care nursing facility at the location of where, I believe where the development will take place. So they will extend onto this building. This is the back end of that development site, so this is the condition of the vegetation that will be disturbed when they develop the site. The second building will disturb some of the parking area. This is a part of the parking area that will be reclaimed for the building, and then they will provide parking under the building and a garage. Again, another look at the construction site, where they'll do some of the extending. Main access to the nursing facility, the backside of this is where the building will be, the new building will be developed. And to the right is where the residential apartments are, and there'll be an extension to those units. Okay, that's just another shot of the existing residential units. Another wraparound of the internal, showing some of the detached single-family, and that's it. So that's a ground-level view of what the subject property looks like, and we'll just go back to the aerial so you can get a better, better look. You've got a look at the overall subject property. And that is the staff report, Mr. Chairman, recommending approval with comments.
Thank you, Andy. This is a Southhold project, I'd ask Commissioner Planamento if he had insights he could share on the facility and the area and general reactions.
Absolutely, and I think Glynnis can also maybe chime in. First, thank you for your presentation. I was delighted that you spoke briefly about the history of Brecknock Hall. I would share, as a resident and an individual who helped review the process, while there's certain things that may have been improved upon, the concept of the life care facility is of regional importance, of county importance, and of state importance. They've been incredible neighbors. They do all kinds of outreach programs. The residents that live there are quite active in our communities, coming from all different professional backgrounds, and it's a real asset to our community. If anyone ever has occasion to visit the site, it's easily accessed at Metro Route 25 as you travel east towards Orient Point with this barrier that takes you to Connecticut. Please just drop in, there's an outdoor sculpture garden. It's a really lovely, lovely place, and I think it's a wonderful spot for those residents that are there. And if any of you have older family members or interest yourself, you might get your name on the waiting list. It's a wonderful opportunity. So if you have any, you know, specific questions, I'll do my best to yield them. But it is a project that I wholeheartedly support, and I think our town also supports.
Is there a sense of the Alzheimer's, obviously, critical issue here and a growing issue undoubtedly across the country? Can you speak a little bit, maybe, just with demographic issues you have at East with regard to that, and obviously why that would be needed?
You know, I don't think that's a question I'm actually qualified to answer. I think on a personal note, I would share the importance of Alzheimer's care. I know of personal friends that have parents suffering, and it's something that I honestly do not have sufficient response or information to share a proper response to. Would you vary?
I might feel that, add a little bit since I just went through putting my dad in a similar facility. But Southhold has, I think, the highest percentage of elderly in the county.
If I could actually add a little humor, it's often called "South-ol." We are a really older community compared to, I think, other...
Oh, you've never heard that?
Oh, yeah.
And also, dealing with memory impaired is a growing concern, and, you know, it can be almost up to a third of patients eventually. Also, we don't have much employment on East End, so they're a major employer, so they are very important to the community. So I wholly support the project. Can I add a "but"?
Yes?
Of course, it's related to wastewater. And that's because I've been studying the Long Island Sound watershed for the Long Island Sound study. And Greenport just renovated their wastewater treatment plant, so it's the best technology. It's only operating at about half capacity, okay, in terms of flow. So they definitely have the room. But it's, it was a consent order because they have a TMDL for the Long Island Sound, and they went from a directive of 27 pounds per day of nitrogen to 11 pounds per nitrogen. In 2012, they had 12, and in February, which there's less loading then, they had nine. So right now, the total pounds are fluctuating around the limit, even though it's at half-capacity. So again, that total... And Greenport Sewer Treatment Plant. So one of the things that I'm trying to advocate for is that when you add to the... And also, Greenport is now looking to expand their sewer district, and they're studying right now expanding both to the west and the east. And they've gotten funding to help pay for the hookup fees for residents. And that will be transferring all the waste loading from the iconic estuary to the Long Island Sound. So again, we're getting more nitrogen going to the Long Island Sound. But the houses that you just see to the west of the site are not sewered because they're over the boundary for being picked up by Greenport Village that has...
Just to be clear, where's the Greenport, is Greenport Village right further west?
South and west, south and just a little west.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt, just again, for a point of clarification, Long Island, I'm sure you're all aware, geographically kind of narrows and necks down as you go east. You can actually see part of an inlet, go pond coming north, and that's the iconic bay immediately to the south of that inlet.
And that area is going to be picked up for the expansion. But the area in the Long Island Sound to the north of the road is still not. And if you could pick up those houses, then you'd be actually reducing the nitrogen loading to the sound. So what I would really like to see is some incorporation of the community that's unsewered, and then you're going to balance that nitrogen loading issue. So, but one of the issues is the hookup fee. So what I'd like to put as a comment is that maybe iconic landing and the village consider negotiating some kind of either lowered or zero hookup fee for areas in that same area, and, you know, if there's some way of contributing to that. But to look at that because I think to have an ecological solution, and also it would help clean up a bigger area, it needs to be considered. Because otherwise, again, we're just adding pounds of nitrogen without mitigating.
Okay, so to be clear, your proposal is that iconic landing look at allowing neighboring areas to tap into their sewage treatment plant? I mean, sorry, into the...
Into the sewage treatment plant, yes. Some kind of subsidy for those homeowners as part of the negotiation. And also, the village may lower the fee too to help mitigate that. So maybe between a little bit of subsidy and a little bit of negotiation with the village.
And who would subsidize it?
Well, maybe iconic landing could help. I mean, the cost, the cost for them would be the equivalent of maybe just a couple of months of operation. And you could hook up a much bigger area.
Okay, so the proposal is, so it's a comment that encourages iconic landing and the village at Greenport to consider looking at...
Expanding...
Finding a low hookup fee for adjoining areas to this project to the sewage treatment plant.
Right, in the Long Island Sound to compensate for nitrogen loading.
So to compensate for nitrogen loading into Long Island Sound, encourage iconic landing and the village at Greenport to negotiate a hookup fee, a hookup opportunity really, for adjoining areas to this project.
Hookup opportunity, that's what Dave does say a lot.
What I'm actually afraid of is these expansions are going to be limited by the total pounds, but they might consider a watershed total benefit to compensate for that because they are going to exceed the total poundage if they're not careful.
So to compensate for, you're saying with regard to the new development and the new Alzheimer's Center, et cetera, it's going to increase the nitrogen loading of the Long Island Sound, and therefore as compensation, or at least as part of the package, will help from a regional perspective, from a regional perspective, to figure out a way to have the other areas that are unsewered tap in.
We're just saying they have to look at it. So can I just, I gotta chime in because I hear the mumbling going on this side of the table.
I just want to say that this is a loophole, and this is why the Long Island Sound is not recovering as it should be. Because as we are, and there is a very good CCMP, and there's an order for nitrogen reduction, and the next threshold is coming up, but as they reduce it, we still have the septic inflow. And so the STPs are being reduced, but we're adding STPs, and we have lots of septic inflow going in. So it's not, it's recovering much slower than originally anticipated because of the increased nitrogen loading that's occurring. That kind of escapes under the jurisdictional control that are currently in place, that's all. And so what Glynnis is doing is just offering one idea, digging outside the box, which I congratulate her on, of how to get that a little bit more under control, that's all. And all she's saying is he has to look at it, or look at making the offer.
Okay. Yeah, any questions about that?
Oh, here comes John.
No, I just think it's a, it's a good point that she's making because it's regional. And one of the things that, as a planning commission, which we've been asking for, which is the county did do a report of all existing sewer treatment plants, all private and municipal, location, age, capacity, and to see where we can encourage residents that are not on septic to hook up to septic. And that's something that we should look internally. So, but the only thing I have issue with is that you're putting it on the applicant to solve the areas of the issues of this area. They're complying because they're part of the village, right?
No, they're not.
They're part of the district.
Maybe they're allowed to tap in.
They're going into the district, yeah.
Should be one there goes beyond the village.
Yeah, so this should be directed towards the village, not for this applicant on handling the... So this should be directed towards the village, not for this applicant on handling the regional issues. It shouldn't be more by that.
I don't know, is that, that's not part of the village either. They're unincorporated. That...
No.
No, but they're part of the sewer district.
It's part of the... It's a contract extension.
The residents to the west are not part of it. So it should be borne of this applicant to deal with this. It should be a regional, it should be a municipal, and they should, I would recommend employing another study to study the studies of how this would impact this area.
Well, I think what, you know, a meta-issue here is that without the Greenport, without the Greenport sewer facility, this wouldn't even be possible. So it goes to show that, you know, sewer treatment plants we have and their ability to, you know, help growth or appropriate is huge and critically important. I do sympathize with what John said about asking the, an applicant to, you know, help their neighbors. But in the grand scheme of things, I guess, I don't think it's that big a deal. It does however go to a larger regional issue of how you deal with sewer treatment.
I just sort of wanted to concur also with Commissioner Finn. While I appreciate Glennis' opinion, and I think she's totally on the mark, the only concern I would have, putting the burden of responsibility on the applicant, I don't think is necessarily fair, especially when you look at the two neighboring properties on either side. Canta Costa has a winery. It's not a farm immediately to the west. They spent a huge amount of money, but that's at-risk developable land. And I don't think that an individual that just built a building and opened it as a public winery until tomorrow plowed it under as a subdivision, but there's this possibility. Likewise, the golf course to the east is a potentially at-risk parcel. So you've got all these different scenarios that could, at some point in the future, play out, which again, would speak to Glennis' point, but I don't think it's fair to put it on the applicant's shoulders that they need to find a way to fund or help, and I would like...
She's just suggesting they try.
No, no, I agree. I just don't know if that's...
And can I add another point to this? Because it could happen, the DUC says, no, you can't, even though they have the flow because the total pounds will exceed. So it's a strategy to allow them to continue and to convince DUC that it's okay. What I'm afraid of is the plan is not going to work at its full capacity because of that limit of the nitrogen poundage.
Capacity, right.
There are two capacities that are regulated. One is flow.
But if they don't have flow.
Right. I know, but it's, it's operating at less than half its capacity right now, so adding to it makes total sense. It's more cost-effective and better for the environment, all that stuff. But it's right at the limit of its regulatory poundage of nitrogen.
The pounds.
So that's the limiting factor for the plant. So you could have a plant that has great capacity to do good, but you might not be able to use that capacity unless you deal with this issue.
All right. So that's the proposal is to add that comment. That's the motion. Is there a second to adding the comment?
I'll second it.
Seconded. All in favor of adding the comment, please raise your hand. Five. One, two, three, four, five. Closed. All right. Five to seven. Down. All right. So it's...
Yes.
I vote it is. Staff recommendation is for approval with five comments. Any other, anything else to add? Seeing none, make a motion.
Oh, my God.
Commissioner Plamento, seconded by Commissioner, actually, I just don't... All in favor, please raise your hand.
My lead's for me.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, ten.
Yeah, my emphasis, I'm sorry.
It's 12 to zero. That, that's that. Two things. We're at Bergen Point with Supervisor Rich Schaper on May 7th. We get a tour at 1:30, meeting at 2:00. This Monday, meeting at East Hampton Town Hall. Breakfast will be served. Talk about how we figure out how to keep farming and new people getting into farming. Last point, I wanted to let you know that Ed Schillingberg from Shelter Island has decided to step off the commission, traveling up and down the county has become, you know, an issue for him. Ed was with us for a year, and we'll certainly miss him. And the supervisor and county executives will be working on a replacement for Ed to represent Shelter Island. There was a resolution sitting around, which hopefully asks all of you to sign, thanking Ed. We'll give that to him at our meeting we're having in East Hampton, which I think is, I think, October is our meeting in East Hampton. Though I want to talk to Kevin about maybe moving that meeting to September. We'll figure that out. So, but anyway, we'll get that to Ed later in the year. Appreciate his service. Anything else anyone wants to raise or discuss? If not, the senior burger boy, motion by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Finn. All in favor of returning. Thank you all.